I want to thank all of you for your time. Tracy, hope you feel better. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, counselor.
I want to say first start off by saying thank you to Sean Young. I believe this is going to be his first meeting. And thanks to the support of Focus for Good Field for helping Sean and helping us to be able to do this. I believe we have two, we have quorum with Tim Sealing.
Um, I, I sent the, the link to Elizabeth Wambui from Fontaine Brothers. She seems to not have got it. But I have all Swandaber's information. I'll try to send it to her again, but she apologizes for not being able to be on. But we're, we're all set.
I just forwarded it to her.
Yeah, just. Awesome. Yeah. The original one. To her too. I don't know what's going on.
It's a, yeah, they, they wonder Sean sent out originally had. It's not the most accurate one. They change every meeting and he sent out the original. So I just, I had, that was what was holding me up. I just got the newest link. So if you haven't got sent out it recently, like just like in the last few minutes, then she may not have it.
Gotcha. So I could have sent out the wrong link. I don't know.
Yeah. So I, I just got it a few minutes ago. If anybody can send it to her. Uh, other than that, we have quorum by, by establishment three is Lindsay Khan.
She is not, um, I, I don't know if she's going to hop on or not. I know she had to go get her daughter for something, but I don't know if that means that she's not going to be on the meeting or if she's going to be joining in.
Okay. I see Liz is here. Thank you, Liz. Uh, she's in now.
Thank you. Sorry.
No apologies. We also, we've had a little bit of glitch. And if there's no objections and for the sake of people's times, I'll get us started. Uh, first of all, everybody knows, I believe everybody, uh, but I Tracy, his, uh, Council Whitfield is not a regular. So just as a courtesy to her, uh, could everybody just kind of walk around the screen here? Introduce themselves. We are joined by, uh, my colleague on the council, uh, Council Tracy Whitfield. And, um, she, we welcome her attendance as well. Um, but Tim, um, obviously the members of the committee, uh, but I believe Liz and Charlie, uh, maybe even Fiore, um, and Eloy, if you could just introduce yourselves with your title so that Tracy, it feels comfortable.
I'll start. My name is Chase Wong, Director of Technical Assistance and Compliance with the City of Springfield. Hello, Counselor Whitfield.
Hello. Of course I don't know you.
Oh, everybody knew Che.
Right.
Uh, Fiore, if you could introduce yourself, please.
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, Fiore Grissetti, I'm an ironworkers local seven, been on the board for about, uh, not soon past its conception. I replaced Andy Alma on the board.
Uh, Liz.
Very well.
All right. Good afternoon, Council Whitfield. My name is Liz Wambui. I am the Director of Diversity at Fontaine Brothers.
Nice to meet you, Liz.
And I believe Eloy, if you could introduce yourself.
Okay. My name is Eloy Toppin. I'm with the Department of Technical Assistance and Compliance working, uh, with Che.
Oh, I get to meet one of your teammates. That's awesome.
Charlie.
Hi, I'm Charlie Payne, uh, with the Carpenters Union.
Lisa.
Lisa Clotson with the Carpenter Union. It's good to have you with us, counselor.
And Lisa. And Frank, please.
Uh, Frank Pear, Fontaine Brothers, Project Manager.
Hi, great. Nice to meet you.
And obviously the members, the voting members of the committees that are present today is myself, Melvin Edwards, Chair of the REO Committee, uh, my colleague on the city council, uh, Council Tim Allen and President of the Ironworkers Union, Mr. Fiore Grissetti. Uh, thank you, everybody very much for your time. I try to get into it as quickly as I can. I believe that, uh, I had a copy. Let me pull this up. Agenda, our report on, I'm going to turn it over to Che, um, for a report on all of the projects. We haven't had been, unfortunately, uh, with the holidays, uh, with the end of the year, the business of the council and with scheduling, um, some of the changes, we haven't been able to have a meeting in more than a few months. Uh, but we're going to get, hopefully get on track and start to have meetings once again monthly. Uh, and even more, uh, sooner if necessary for any particular projects or, or issues that arise. Che, the, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you. Um, Brendan, can you put the, uh, workforce reports on the screen, please?
He's unsure that he has.
Oh, oh, Sean, can you put them on the screen? I'm sorry. They went to you. I apologize, Brendan.
Uh, Brendan, can, uh, can you give a change this, uh?
I, I sent them to Sean, but I can actually.
Brendan can let you, you become, um, share the screen, I believe, and then you can put them up. I have a copy here. I believe they were sent out to all the co- uh, members of the committee.
Yeah, they were all sent out, but I can, I just wanted them on the screen so everybody can see them, but I can just read them off.
Screen share because I'm not hosting this meeting, uh, focuses.
Uh, Brendan, can you send your screen share to Sean, please?
Yeah, um, I haven't said actually that anyone in this meeting should be able to screen share. Um, so, uh, anyone with those docs can pull them up, or if you would like to send them over to me, um, I, I would be more than willing to do that if you wanted to forward them to my email address.
Can you pull them up, Sean?
Shit.
There you go.
There we go. Okay. Uh, and.
Quick question. Where were these sent? Cause I do, did not see any attachments or, uh, catch any, any of these.
I sent them to Sean and I, uh, CC'd, uh, uh, the chairman.
Okay. Alright, so, um, I'll bring it up.
You can put the first one up, uh, Sean.
Um, let me see. Che, I might, um, I'm just popping into a server here. I can pull up the ones, the report for, um, Deberry Swan. If you want to start with that, it's a.
No, he's, he's got it. It looks like he's got it. Thank you, Liz.
I think he had it. He just was turned sideways.
Yeah, they were sent to me sideways. I'm sorry about that. It was, um, trying to find how to rotate them.
Okay, you can pull up the Berry Swan then, Liz, in the meantime, please. Thank you.
Apology for the confusion, everyone. Um, yeah. Managing this transition was a little more hectic than we anticipated.
Alright, yeah, we'll go. We got him. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, the Berry Swan, uh, for minorities, you see it's, uh, thirty-six point two percent. Um, for, uh, women, it's at five point zero seven percent. For veterans, uh, five point three percent and for Springfield residents, nineteen, uh, point six five percent. Um, some things that, uh, we're looking towards right now, we have, uh, William Roberts Electric, that will break, be bringing on another woman, uh, Pursuit Construction will be bringing on another woman. Um, NEIS Millwork, uh, will be adding a resident and a person of color. Um, and, uh, Singer Equipment will be adding a resident and a person of color, um, as well. So, uh, we've, uh, been bringing up, uh, the women percentages, uh, slowly but surely. Um, Liz, before you got on, I didn't know if we had quorum or not. I had gave, uh, Charlie his shout out, so you can.
Oh, yay.
Uh, uh, jump in on that one because Charlie has definitely helped out, uh, with, uh, Swandaber and with, uh, SciTech Doors and Windows. A lot immensely. So, um, we're looking obviously to build on the resident numbers, um, and the women numbers, uh, right now.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Um, let me, uh, please reiterate, um, thanks to Charlie, put all the work that he's done to work with, uh, subcontractors, um, you know, to help when, you know, they do need to make adjustments to the crew, uh, but be it, you know, adding, you know, residents and, and women. And so it's been, you know, barking wonderfully in that as he's, as he's having conversations, we're also having conversations with them and, you know, kind of staying on the same page. Um, and all of us doing what we can, um, to keep the numbers, you know, trending up in the right direction. Um, a couple of other things to note, there were some, you know, contractors who we were, um, you know, working with to, to get some participation, um, from and, you know, of the ones that we have been working with throughout the fall. Um, we have seen some, some, uh, participation, uh, for women as well. So, um, we, and if anybody's interested in some of the other project milestones, certainly we can have, uh, Frank, uh, speak more to that, but, um, you know, we still, you know, have a ways to go to June, but we are, uh, you know, having conversations with subcontractors, um, to, to make sure that they're doing everything that they can to, to hit these goals and, um, and Che, feel free to, um, you know, speak on this too, you know, with some of subcontractors, what we're finding is, um, you know, for those who have very limited crews, um, you know, we know that their, um, participation on any, in, in given category will be, you know, limited, right? Cause if you have two or three folks, um, then, you know, you want to, um, you know, you want to make sure that you start off, um, certainly on the right foot, but for some of them, we knew that they were, um, you know, coming in with, um, you know, kind of limited crews. So, uh, I'll stop.
Yeah, uh, it to, to, yeah, expound on that. The other, uh, part is some of the, uh, we'll call them problem children, uh, subs that have been issues, um, in the past and have, you know, uh, tacitly pushed back or have had issues, uh, meeting their numbers have, uh, actually been doing better. Um, so we are making progress, uh, with some problem children and moving the needle forward. And moreover, with the finishing trades coming on, we'll actually have a, a good chance to make a push to get to the uh, threshold for women and residents, uh, in certain areas.
Okay. Any questions, members, council, and I, for the sake of just being, um, moving things along? Any questions from our guests as well as the members of the committee?
Uh, Council Whitfield, I just, uh, scrolled up. Can you see the top? Can you see the columns? I just want to make sure. I just saw your chat.
Oh, yes, I, I can see them now. I just didn't know what numbers went with what. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Fiore, it's our, um.
Yeah, so it, I, I'm like the counselor. I'm trying to look at this form and it's like, I, it's too big. I can't read it. I have requested in the past, it should be in minutes, that when we get documents sent in, we as the boards, whether we're meeting or not, should be seeing these documents. I didn't get them. I didn't get a privy to look at them. Uh, it's kind of embarrassing to show up at a meeting without having any information about what's, what's, what's going on in the city for projects. Uh, and looking at this is not helping me one bit decide who, you know, who's doing good and who's doing bad. Uh, who's making an effort? Who, who isn't making an effort based on not even be able to see this in, we're trying to get through a meeting in less than an hour. So I have requested these in the past. I would like to see them get sent out to the board as a whole.
Uh, Sean, if you're listening as well, um, any paperwork that comes in, I assumed that they had been sent out. I got them. Uh, it was at the bottom of the email as an attachment at the bottom of the, the email. I don't know if it was an issue of, um, not going down far enough, but I thought that it was sent out to multiple people. Uh, if you got the, if you got the email about the meeting and with the agenda and stuff, I believe these were attached to the bottom, but maybe I'm incorrect with that. But Sean is, uh, our new, um, assistant related to, uh, she, he's replacing Maureen Veer. So he's going to make sure from now on to anything that comes from Che or anybody else regarding this committee is sent out to all of us. Uh, Tim, did you have anything you want to add or, or question regarding, and this is, uh, specifically related to D. Barry Homer? Okay, now, if you're saying anything, you're muted.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Melvin. Um, no, I would just reiterate what, you know, what people have already said. That's fine. Um, I would just, but also just like, um, just your summary, Che, of, you know, how you, you, you mentioned some percentages before. You mentioned Charlie was helping a lot with, with, uh, you know, helping to get people who will help us fulfill our, um, different percentages. Um, is there anything else? Like, how much longer is this project? Um, Che?
Um, uh, Liz should have, or Frank should have the percentages. We're gonna, they were going to have them for the, uh, meeting today.
June, June thirtieth is substantial completion, Tim, of the building.
June thirtieth, okay.
Yeah, then what they'll do is they'll move the, the students in over the summer. And then once the students are safely in and they, they're confident, we will then, uh, start the demolition and the abatement of the existing Deberry Building. And then once that's down, there are some, uh, parking lot improvements where the old school was.
So is the, is, thanks for that info. Um, so is the goal to have the existing Deberry Building down before this next school system, school year?
No, the, the kids will be in school close to when a, when a building's coming down. It'll be, there'll be some overlap.
There'll be some overlap. Alright. Um, and, um, the parking lot that you're referring to, is that down?
Yeah, where the existing school is.
Yep.
The parking lot and under the parking lot is a storm detention system that cannot be installed until a building is, is removed. So, e- end of June, they, they're getting their furniture. They'll start moving in. Uh, I would imagine our process will go all through the summer and then, uh, once they're out of the building, then we can start the abatement and the demolition.
Okay, um,
how many, how many students are going to be in this building?
Oh, I'm not sure. It's two, it's two full schools.
Two full schools, alright. So several hundreds. Um, yeah. Alright, alright, and, um, what do you guys see as your, besides trying to get those percentages up, the help that Charlie's given, et cetera? What other, you know, issue has there been on this? You know, um, what's been the biggest issue, if you will?
The, the residence by far is the toughest, um, goal to hit.
It is.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah. So to that end, you know, um, you know, one of the things that we have done is to have conversations early on with subcontractors, right? So before, um, the work begins, we, you know, at least have a sense of where, um, there might be gaps. And then that's when we engage, you know, folks like Charlie, you know, folks like, you know, other community partners to see, um, if we can do anything to, you know, to connect them with, um, you know, with potential candidates. And for some of our subcontractors, we have been able to do that. Um.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great. Thank you. And I'm all set. Uh, Counselor Edwards, I'm all set for now.
Thank you. Uh, I, I know we, uh, Fiore, you had some questions. Are, are we all set on this particular project? Okay, Fiore had some comments, or was looking for an update from Che, uh, uh, I believe with the Forest Park project.
Yup, um, could has it, uh, have you, were able to straighten those out, uh, Sean, or no? Apologies for sending to you them sideways. I don't know how I did that, but obviously I did.
I honestly don't have a, it doesn't show me where I can, um, change it to horizontal. Um, but I can, and it's, I can zoom in.
Um, Sean, if you, if you can send them to me and I can try to see if I can use one of our programs.
Okay. We were sent to Adobe.
I can, um, I can just read off the numbers right now for the sake of time and then we can put them up, um, when he sends it over. Cause we have a presentation at the end of, uh.
Oh, there you go. There it is. It's there.
I guess it automatically corrects itself.
Awesome.
That's, that's, that's me. I decided I got it from Sean and it's easier to rotate PDFs on a Mac, so.
Got you. Got you. So the forestry building, our, uh, problem project, uh, uh, we have, uh, three point seven percent residents, twenty-three percent minorities, uh, zero percent females and seven point one-two percent, uh, veterans. This spreadsheet is from October. Um, they still have November and December to update along with a host of other, uh, materials. Um, however, with the finishing trades being on right now, uh, the project is eighty-three percent done. Um, SLO painting will be, uh, will have on a woman resident and a minority resident. Intelligent signage, uh, has a woman resident, uh, CMC Shades has a resident. Overhead doors, uh, has a woman. So, um, in the next two months, as this gets updated, uh, the numbers will improve. Um, but again, uh, the contractor woefully underprepared. It has acknowledged that, has met with Melvin, um, and will not be bidding another REO project until they can get their ducks in a row.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I have a question.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, yeah, that was kind of stark, uh, after what you said before. It was hard to get residents. Um, but I, then that, I, I think our goal for residents, isn't it something like thirty or thirty-five percent?
Thirty-five percent, yes.
And, and on the, uh, whatever that project is, we just talked about, forgetting the name of it. We were like at six percent or eight percent.
Uh, we, no, we're at like four percent.
Four percent.
Yeah, I mean, it, we're, well, you're, you're probably closer to the December number. The December numbers will probably be around hovering around ten percent, but it's still woefully under the thirty-five percent.
It's, it's wo- it's woefully under, no matter what it is.
Correct, definitely.
What have we done? I'm sure you guys have done things to pick that up, uh, but.
Uh, e- everything I could as far as the project is concerned. We've had, uh, extensive conversations about this project. We can go back into it if you like. Uh, the, but the, uh, the general contractor was underprepared, never, uh, had an REO project before. Had a project, uh, uh, manager, uh, managing the project and the administration of the project. Um, so they started off behind, uh, never really caught up and got their footing. Um, and basically were doing the project. I'm not going to say on the cheap, uh, but they should have had dedicated staff uh, to both aspects of the project. They did not. Um, and this is how it, uh, ended up. Uh, I tried to work with them as best as possible, still trying to work with them as best as possible. Uh, but again, never had an REO project before, really just did horizontal construction for streets and roads, um, and came out of their depths and, uh, essentially this is what happened. Uh, so we talked about, uh, corrective action measures. We talked about them, uh, not bidding projects until they can get their, uh, workforce crews together. Um, so we've talked about plenty of things, uh, concerning this project, uh, with the committee, uh, with the general contractor and the like.
And I can jump in.
The number is so low that I just wonder what it tells us about trying to, I, I'm sure you guys have internship programs and, you know, that sort of thing too, but do we need to develop?
Oh, I mean, the trades in general need a huge infusion and there's, there's going to be uh, a shortage. Put, put it like this, um, to, to, to get into the, uh, macro of it, if you, if, if you want. Um, the, uh, uh, numbers, e- every, put it like this, every, uh, other, uh, uh, company or, uh, organization or municipality that's done this work has told us that thirty-five percent is a very lofty figure. Um, and so you have people that dispute it. You have people that say yes. You have people that say no, but you have people that do the work, uh, uh, every day. Um, uh, Maggie Adamba, who does the work every day, uh, uh, says this is a very lofty number and most other REOs or, uh, uh, policies as such or ordinances, uh, the residency goal, uh, is not thirty-five percent. Um, listen, I'm not saying we can't get it or not. I'm just telling you what the industry has, has said.
Yeah, no, that's fair. I just, I think we have hit close to thirty-five percent on some other projects.
We, we came close. We came close on, uh, uh, Brightwood Lincoln, um, and we are, uh, over it actually at, uh, SciTech Doors and Windows. However, uh, uh, SciTech Doors and Windows is a much smaller project. Um, it's a, uh, ten point three million dollar project, uh, uh, and, um, this project, if you look at it, you have about twenty subs. You have two subs over two thousand hours and two subs at a thousand hours. And then the rest of the fourteen subs are hovering around, uh, five hundred hours at best. You have some subs with uh, fifty hours, uh, the five hundred hours, four hundred hours. Um, so if you're talking about man hours on a project, again, not defending the project, just saying the sheer, uh, facts.
Yeah.
Okay. And I just wanted to echo that I did meet with the owner back quite a while ago, some months ago. We, I'm, I'm not going to, um, try to impede, you know, impugn to his, uh, integrity or anything, but he was pretty straightforward that he wasn't really prepared. Uh, he echoed much of what, uh, has been relayed by Che. Uh, he said he wanted to do better. I believe after I had a conversation with him, he allocated one of his staff to specifically being, yeah.
In the office, yes.
Yes.
He told me that. Correct.
Exactly. He didn't have, when he started the project, he didn't have somebody dedicated, um, to do the project like a Liz. Uh, but he did take somebody off the, off the floor and put him into the office to try to do this. Uh, he knows that he has to be better prepared if he's going to apply for other REO jobs. And, um, so I didn't, I know there was a request for him to come forward. I tried to get that together, but after I met with him, um, it was, it was, um, just wasn't, it didn't work out in terms of, um, the invitation was extended, but we weren't having any meetings. We weren't able to even get together as a committee be over the last few months anyway. So if, uh, if anybody's to blame on that part and, uh, yes, me, and at a certain point, I just felt like the project was so far gone. The guy knows what the issue is. It's, um, it's like, you know, when Tim just mentioned a minute ago about we have Prince's programs or something of that nature, I believe he said, this, we don't, the city doesn't. Um, it's the unions that deserve the applause, we did work that he's trying to do. But I just posted, uh, earlier today, so like half hour, two minutes leading up to the meeting, something that was sent out by the carpenters recruiting women, uh, for apprentice opportunities. Um, this is not exclusive to this one contractor. So that's, you know, the ideal that we know that there's too many people walking around Springfield who are underemployed or unemployed, but the reality is, is that every industry is struggling to get people to way of it to work. And because this is construction, um, it makes it even more difficult because people can't put down the drugs or the weed, which is now just a part of, you know, integrated part of the fabric of our community. They can't pass those exams, those tests, and even in positions where Cory's are not an issue. Um, the drug testing does become an issue. The commitment to the training. Uh, I'm, I'm constantly telling people that, you know, you can spend a hundred, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars to get a degree. It's not going to guarantee you a job where you can go into an apprentice program where you will be able to get to work. Uh, that's enough for me. Anyway, I know Fiore has some questions and then I'm, I'm gonna start with Fiore. And then I'm going to move over to Tracy Whitfield. So go ahead, Fiore.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to, um, so quick question, looking at this. Um, we have a tendency to list the supplier, which, yeah, I mean, I know my industry, we have Crocker Building. Crocker Building did not perform the work there to my knowledge. So since they're turning in certified payroll, this is a certified payroll project. Should we be listing the actual, uh, building and rector, uh, and more than likely siding guy that did the, uh, the project there? Um, but I also want to point out that as far as the number of thirty-five percent, there've been plenty of jobs. Uh, there's plenty of documented history of projects meeting thirty-five percent, uh, in and around the city. Um, as far as you have a general contractor on Frank, Frank knows the industry. It is all about picking the right subs, uh, and getting your subs to actually do the right thing at that point. Because you have contractors that, um, are on here that are really good size, that have some terrible numbers. We have some other contractors that are, uh, you know, um, that have a decent number on them uh, and yet have zeros across the board. So, you know, what is the effort really made of that particular company? They're from Western Mass. We've got other companies that I agree every fifty, two hundred, two hundred, three hundred. Every fifty, two hundred, two hundred, three hundred hour, all add up to be, you know, three, four thousand hours. But there's some companies, at least you got a Hickman Electric, the guy had two phenomenal numbers. Uh and two shitty numbers, but at least he did something, so it shows that, you know, the guy tried, just didn't have the manpower. Uh but again, I I just want to be clear that. Um you know, this particular job, we didn't see the numbers, we weren't able to really get. Probably on people because, you know, the. Uh so late in the game, three quarters of the work was done before it uh uh happened, and and again. This law has been in effect, I want to be clear for fifteen years, so anybody that says, and it's in every document, and you sign a document that says. I will abide by it, so as a general contractor, he knew it was in there, he knew he had to get. Subs that had the numbers, he's supposed to pre-screen his scrubs, subs, I'm assuming. I don't, I'm not saying he's supposed to, but I would assume he is, because his subs get the same document. That say you're supposed to make an effort if you take this project, so I want to be clear that that this project was a mess and I. That we definitely need to work on something like this, uh so it doesn't happen again.
Your, when you, when you get a chance, can 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 you send me over the projects that you're speaking of? Uh in and around the area that are hitting thirty-five percent, please, whenever you get a chance.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Uh Tracy, uh uh Council Whitfield.
Thank you, Councilor, uh Ms. Chair. I, okay, this Forest Park project, is it completed?
Eighty-three percent.
Eighty-three percent, and what is this project?
The four free operations building.
I see it now, so not one woman was hired to work on?
There there are women on the project, so uh when we started, uh S L O painting. Has a woman resident, um intelligent signage has a woman, um overhead doors has a woman. Um so there are, to my knowledge, right now, three women that have worked on the project. But up until November, correct, there were no women working on the project.
Okay, so this is just through November?
Yeah, through uh October. Through October, eh but but the November and December workforce report forms haven't been submitted. Um but there were no women um in November, to my knowledge, and they came on in December.
December, okay, now. So what happens when? Just because I don't really know the process, what happens when these um subcontractors are not meeting their goals, like? What's the process, is it like meetings, communication, like?
Correct, uh all all the above, me corrective action meetings, they have a maximum effort form or they have to uh. Uh look for those bodies, uh get on, uh put out uh uh postings, put out. Uh message boards, Indeed, Monster, look to the unions, um look to uh workforce development agencies. Um they have to try to meet their numbers.
And do they like work with the community colleges at all, or um some of our local high school like Putnam?
Um well, they not not in particular, no, um they need uh them to be at least apprentices. Uh and at the high school level, um they're not apprentices yet.
Okay.
And and yeah, then we work with the local agencies, Community Works, uh uh Future Works. Uh um you have some workforce development. Agencies in the areas that can supply bodies and have uh apprenticeship programs. Um and the unions and the like, so that's what happens, and then. Uh basically, uh uh they get written up and reported, uh and hopefully. Going forward, they get dinged, so uh it makes it hard for them to be the lowest responsible bidder on a project, but that also takes time.
So all the workers have to be union workers?
No, 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 not not at all, um you can have open shop workers, you can have union workers. Um we're just looking for the uh uh numbers to fulfill our requirements for the REO.
Gotcha, cuz um like I never hear advertisement on the local radio stations, like I don't hear it from any of these. Subcontractors and I and I listen to it quite often, I know there's uh those out here looking for work, like. Because they call and ask us if there's any jobs. And I think like me, like if there are subcontractors that are struggling, that they could also reach out to us to see if we know. Um any of these folks with these particular skill sets that are looking for work, but I never get anything like that, I don't hear. Them advertising for these workers on any local. Or do I see them in local um newspapers, like how how would some of these workers?
Well, they they do advertise in the newspapers, they do send them to all the neighborhood councils. Um they do advertise, uh so we have a resource guide in our REO. A packet, if you go to our uh REO ordinance, there's a resource guide that says all the resources that they have access to advertise. On and in uh for their uh workforce, but you can definitely shoot me an email with other platforms or mediums. Um that they can communicate with, and I can put that on the resource form as well.
So I go to the website and I see the resource file?
Yes, well, you go, well, what you, it's on the website now, uh on our presentation, hopefully you have time to get it in, because we have one more project. Uh to go over, uh but you can find the REO ordinance on the city website, correct, yes. Um and the resource guide is in the uh uh reporting docs. And uh you can email me with any other uh uh advertisement uh or resource. Uh agency person persons, um and that can go into the resource guide as well.
Okay, cuz I I appreciate that there's a resource guide, but if they're not taking advantage of it. Uh that's the information that I want to know, because I get local resources a lot, and I've never seen some of these names um advertised. In them, like a lot of these names are new to me, some that I I am familiar with. Um but some I've never seen before, and they could be new to the projects, but. Um I I think that you're gonna fail to get some of these resources if you're if you're not using the resources as afforded to you. Um to be able to reach certain populations or target uh markets, but definitely. I will look on the website, see what's out there, um and I can refer you, because even like. Um are you familiar with Beckma Black Economic? Um. Black Economic Beckma, Black Economic Council of Massachusetts. Like they do a lot of advertisement and and they have um certain industries that they advertise to, it is a membership. Um organization, but I see a lot of their advertisements um coming out to us quite often. And even um LEDC, the Latino Economic Development Council and and like other resources, so. Um Che, I will take you up on that offer and send you some of the resources that I have that um organizations might be able to.
Definitely, definitely, go, it'll go right into the resource guide, wha- whatever you send me, completely.
Alrighty, thank you.
Uh Fury, are you all set, if not?
No, just one more quick comment, so I I I I uh want to make sure that. Uh are are we, so again, so cuz I'm gonna forget to do this. So cracker builders, will we be correcting, and I think some previous reports listed the fabricator. Uh we can we make sure that we have the subs that are showing up on the projects listed. Uh for uh the tracking uh sheets that come forward. And then I had to look up who Harbor was, Haber, uh he's the excavating company, he had the most hours. Uh but again, it's by contractor choice, you look at uh some of the previous jobs where, yes, it is hard to get. Uh a lot of times, it's one guy and a machine, but the numbers for a guy with the most hours there are just atrocious, so. It is by contractor choice of who you get to show up to do these jobs, and this is a prevailing wage job, so it's not like. Uh the workers aren't getting all paid the same, thanks.
I believe Che and Eloy have a presentation, is that it's appropriate time for that to occur?
We we have one more, if you guys want to put SciTech up.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, I got it here, the uh the SciTech window project.
Yeah, you you have that Brendan or Sean, can you guys put up uh SciTech on the screen so we can go go to that uh briefly? To get to our presentation.
I only have the one PDF.
Okay.
But. If you just want to email it to your direct, I I could throw it up.
Yep, I got you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Also, we got these new webcam, it's so high up, you can see all the gray hair, it's the worst, I I need a lower webcam.
Take him down, you ah.
That's a sign of maturity, it's not a bad.
Wisdom.
I'm I'm twenty-seven.
Yeah, so you get wise enough, it ain't nothing, you know, this is the getting look like me. And of course Charlie, we rocking, ain't we Charlie?
Sorry, it's uh, that's where my, it's sideways, I can't rotate it.
Okay, I I'll just read off the numbers, that's fine.
See, I can zoom in somewhere.
You can go back to the to, okay, that's fine, um so for residents, we have fifty point seven percent. Minorities forty-three point five percent, uh females three point five percent. Uh veterans, uh two point five eight percent. Uh the project is ninety-nine percent done, the last window went in this week. Um. What you don't see on there, Celtic painting should be on there, and they have a resident and C M C shades. Uh should be on there, and they have a woman in a minority. Um so uh uh those are the numbers for the project, uh those will pro- those will will be. Uh the final numbers for the project outside of the woman, uh uh minority and residents. Uh getting a little bit of a bump uh before the end.
Can you rotate that screen and?
Yeah, I don't have rotating option for for some.
Send it to Brendan, please.
I I I sent it over before I even shared it, um.
Okay.
Maybe uh Brendan, if you're able to stop my share and um pull it up for me.
Yep, just one second.
Okay. I'm gonna stop the share for a second.
Eloy, and we gotta motor through this presentation, bro.
Sure, and when you talk about the resource guide, that's the uh, I think we have, we have that, so I'll try to get to that as well, just quickly.
But. Well, just those functionality, you're good, I don't worry about the resource guide.
Okay.
That's fine, um they can find it and uh Councilor Whitfield has so graciously offered up her uh. Uh resources as well that can be added to the guide.
Okay, we got it now, let's go.
Is is this what you're looking for?
Yes.
Correct, thank you. So residents fifty point seven percent, minorities forty-three point five percent, uh females three point five six percent. Um and veterans two point five eight percent, the female number will go up. A little bit, uh uh minorities and residents as well, um but those will be the final numbers for the project, the last window went in this week. Um just some punchless items to be done, um and that'll be it.
Any questions on this particular proj- uh Fury, start and then.
Yeah, so so again, we we gotta start having conversations, I guess. Um we've already had our test case project. The, we've met two of four uh of the numbers here, so I want to be clear to that C Allison. Um I believe is from out of state, correct, so if that's the case.
C S Allison is from Boston, they're not from out of the state, but they're not from the area.
Okay, I was gonna say, if the guy was from Rhode Island, he could have zeros for residency because of the fact that he was from out of state. But again, he was the prime on the job, correct, or? Uh either way, the guy's got zeros, he's from Massachusetts, so again, based on where a company's from. They from Boston, so what's the effort they made to try to get residents knowing they were coming to a job in Springfield? Uh to have a zero there with, you know, again, it just, so so again, that that to me is a bad number. From a guy from Boston that knew he was coming to Springfield, but so what do we send this guy as a board, if anything? He's got two of the four numbers met, it doesn't sound like females is gonna go over the percentage, what happens now? And what are, are we sending official letter to the Forest Park General Contractor at the end of? That job for the bad numbers, so something is officially on file, and speaking of, weren't we supposed to send another letter to somebody? I don't even know who, and did we ever send that letter saying you were, did not perform to specifications for that project?
They all get letters after the project on their performance, e- every every project, they get letters concerning their performance, and to say. You did a great job for meeting the numbers in these areas, and you did not meet the numbers in these areas, uh uh. Of of the uh project, so yeah, everybody gets a letter, um and they all get uh uh assessed on their performance. And these projects will get letters as well.
So so that should play into these numbers, or these letters should play into these contractors, uh. Bidding future work in the city of Springfield, I'm not saying one is enough to get them thrown out, my point is. That when they submit another numbers, we need to make sure that 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 letter is read for the review committee when they're submitting bids on future projects.
Definitely.
Okay. Tracy?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, um. Is there like a list that tells us which contractors are? Um minority woman owned, um and like from Springfield, Springfield. Um own and operated businesses, that would be helpful, because I wouldn't know where any of these um. Subcontractors are located or what their demographics are. So is that something that can be added, or is there another spreadsheet that have that level of detail?
No, no, there is not.
I think that's.
Say that again?
I said, I think it's important information to have, cuz we also want to know where the general contractors are hiring from. Like, I think that's important to know as well, not just um who the subcontractors are, we want to know. Who the general contractors are hiring, and if they're even meeting um required numbers and getting general um subcontractors on board. You know, that's that should be a a requirement, because if you are from the area, you're probably gonna hire more locally. Like Fury, out of Boston, you're you're probably not gonna hire too many um Springfield, right? Or or wherever you're from is where you're gonna hire um. The majority of your workers from, and that's probably one of the reasons they're not meeting these numbers is because. That's who they know, and I'm not saying that they're trying to be like. You know, biased to any area, but that's who they know, that's who they're used to working with, and that's who they're gonna hire, so. I think it's important to see where these folks come from and what their demographics are as well.
Hmm. Che, can you just comment on the fact that they have, the bidding goes out generally to the lowest?
Uh lowest responsible bidder, definitely, yes, the uh there there's a lot of variables at play, yes. Uh as far as that's concerned, and as far as the database, that would be great, uh uh when. Uh we have or anybody else has uh time to construct that database with all this information in it, that that would be an awesome resource, I completely agree.
Well, if we don't have that resource, then we need to consider getting it, and maybe that's. That needs to be put in the budget, cuz budget season is coming up, but it is important information, like. We need to have all the background data and not just bits and pieces, you can't put a whole summary of information together without having all the data together. And I worked as a data analyst and collected a lot of data, and you only know the whole picture when you have all the data, I do understand the procurement process. Of going with the lowest responsible bidder, but that's not always a fair process either. I'm I'm just gonna leave that where it's at, but um I do understand the procurement process, just from working in the city. Um I still like to know all the data behind the numbers, cuz it tells the whole story. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Awesome.
Okay, um Che, Eloy, uh I I believe, well, do they need more questions on SciTech? If not, I'd like to get uh give Che and Eloy the floor uh or the screen. And we can, uh yeah, we need to be able to share.
You got it, Eloy.
Okay. Okay, I'm getting there, getting there.
So while always pulling that up, um we have uh one project coming up. Uh mid-February, it is uh Doug and Field. Um Gaglier Ducci uh will be doing the prep work uh for the field, so one point four main hour project. It will be a month long, um. It will be a month long, um, so from mid to end of February uh to mid to end of March. Uh, Gaglier Ducci will be doing field prep at uh Duggan High School.
Oh, okay, this this, we have it all set up, so uh what the Department of Technical Assistance is doing is to trying to provide as much information. About what the uh, what we're doing as a department. And uh also the parties that we work with, and one of the uh obvious parties that we work with is the uh, is the REO Committee. So on the webpage, we now, uh, we now have. Information on the Responsible Employer Ordinance, and so you'll see here that explains what it is. And then it also gives the numbers that the uh REO is working with. Requiring thirty five percent or as a goal for for residents, minorities twenty percent. Women six point nine percent and veterans five percent. In this uh page as well, uh, and indivi- anybody that's looking at it can access the uh REO uh. Ordinance, as you can see here, and hold on. And also it provides information about the committee itself and uh the committee members. On our webpage, the Department of Trans- uh Technical Assistance uh and Systems webpage. We have information on current projects, so this is uh the Dayberry Homer Elementary School Project. And as we move forward with this uh page, we will be adding all the REO projects and all. The Department of Technical Assistance projects, so here, here you have information about the uh, the school, uh Homer Elementary. But also, uh, and then anybody looking at this can access the data by clicking there. And uh it'll be accessible for everybody. So what uh our goal is, is to uh be as transparent as possible. Uh, to the community, but also provide information to the community that we feel is important. Just for them to know, and also just kind of an education that, you know, how many people know about the REO uh? Ordinance and what the uh goals are for the ord- for the ordinance. Uh, also, if we go uh on the De- Department of Technical Systems Compliance uh webpage, uh. We're going to have, and this is something I think that uh Councilwoman Whitfield was alluding to. But we'll have, uh, we're working currently on job opportunities that are available. And on this page, we'll eventually we're requiring contractors to put all their uh. Jobs needs on this page, and so that's going to be a requirement. And so if they, knowing that they have these goals to meet, we'll see that they are actually uh advertising for it. And on the same page, we'll have, eh, there's gonna be a section for residents and uh to apply for these positions. So that could connect to what Councilwoman Whitfield uh was just mentioned. Where we can then uh connect those resources and uh and other, you know, other agencies that are looking for to uh. For local residents uh to to be hired, they can also uh access this and see the positions or refer individuals here. To apply for uh the jobs, uh city construction jobs. Uh, we, let me see, looks, I think links to department forms or related activities. Uh, under contract compliance certified guides for contractors, contractors employment resources. Is, and this is that resource page, is this what you were talking about, Shay?
Correct.
Yeah, so here it is right here, and uh, and we can always add additional resources. Anything you'd like to add, Shay?
No, you did an excellent job, uh, thank you, Eloy, and uh always being modest, he did this all by himself, I had nothing to do with this. He did a great job on the website, so I think uh, it'll add more connectivity and we can have. A centralized location that people uh uh workforce can look for opportunities, that the opportunities will be here. And so it's more of a uh, uh centralized location rather than just relying on the. Uh contractor to send out the maximum efforts for him and do it uh all by themselves, uh, so it's a little bit. Uh, another step of of compliance, basically.
Okay, very well done, Eloy, um, Jay, both of you, congratulations, appreciated. And that actually kind of lines up with some of the comments from Council Whitfield. Um, she may have more resources that can be inserted into that page. And uh, and I think the listing of potential jobs that are out there by the subs is is essentially what she was trying to get at. Um, it doesn't matter, seems like whatever the issue is, access to information, people knowing whether it's the REO, whether it's. ARPA money or any other benefit or uh available service from the city, there's always somebody who doesn't know or know how, where to get the information. So anything we can do to make that easier for people, the better, um. Is there any other thing that I need to um? Address, or can I take public comment from our guests, which is primarily either Frank? Um, Liz, Lisa, Charlie? All right, everybody, don't fall over yourself, just have something to say.
Melvin?
Yes.
One of, one of the things we did is we reached out to the, the, like this Saint John's Church. Uh, we reached out to the Shiloh Church. We reached out to uh the neighborhood councils. Um, besides the union, and unfortunately, we didn't get a big response from that. But as, it was something that we, we did do, um, if there was uh other avenues. Yeah, stick and the different, uh, we, we have reached out to like the Putnam type people just to try to get interest early on. Um, but the the unions have been our biggest supporters in this effort, for sure.
I appreciate that, and and just, I'm, I think we can, I'm pretty get close to winding this thing down, uh, and we're, we're. Within about, we're coming up on an hour, since we were like three oh five getting started, um, but I do appreciate the efforts and. Um, you made, I have been charged, um, the president of council, Council Letterman, uh, has created some. Um, committees were, to increase uh residents engagement with how our city government works. I've been charged with hosting a committee on labor relations and workforce development. And so I may be reaching out shortly to many of you on this screen and to others to try to put something together. What we're hopeful is that residents, people, uh, common folks, or even people connected into construction in the workforce and job development. Would come together uh under and allow me to chair a meeting where they can share some ideals. And we can listen as uh city counselors and then hopefully implement some new I uh ways of how to improve the workforce, uh, obviously. Um, more people living in and around Springfield working, earning uh livable wages is better, and um. I know the minimum wage has increased, but it's still not considered a livable wage here in Massachusetts. And these construction jobs are livable wage jobs, these are jobs that can afford people the opportunity to own homes if they choose. Or uh at least have a much higher standard of living, so to all of you, I really applaud what you're doing, thank you for joining me in this effort to try to make things better. Um, and I appreciate the passion and the questions and the comments and the work that's being done, um. Are there anybody else that has anything they'd like to add before a, uh, Charlie?
Yeah, yeah, Counselor Edwards, I'd like to mention there are two other projects, uh, Thirty One Elm Street. I have at the end of uh December, seventeen carpenters on that project. Um, seven of them were city residents. That's a Fontaine Brothers job, um, and uh. I'm looking at the hours, more than seven of those uh of the total people are people of color.
Thank you.
And, and I'd also like to mention the Springfield College project. Um, they decided to, to um try to mimic the numbers. Uh, that the city has for their REO, and that's create, that created, uh, they called me and asked for three women. And I put three women of color to work on that job, two from the city. And uh, so ju- the REO being out there creates opportunities, not just on city jobs. But and on other jobs, for people, uh, partners in the city want to create, uh, they want to create good jobs. And I mean, we could have, we could have used the pattern of checker boarding. Fontaine, it took the high road, didn't do that, where we would take everybody, every resident and load up your job. But that's not how you build a career for folks, you put them with a company that's gonna invest time in them, train them. And then they may be, they may go to work on a job uh somewhere else, uh, you know, another town or community. That's, you can't, you can't do that where you overload the job with people, so slowly getting there. But if you look at the overall numbers of every job in the city, the REO has created work, not just on REO jobs.
So I'd like to piggyback on that, and um, thank you for that, Charlie, that's awesome. And uh, I'd like to piggyback on that to say, you know, uh, Melvin, uh, uh, and Tim, well, Counselor Edwards and and. Uh, Counselor Allen, um, you guys uh should, I'm not saying take a victory lap, but definitely. Um, take some pride uh in what uh has been established for you guys uh in the council. Uh, as Charlie just intimated, and these projects, no matter how people look at them, are successful projects. Uh, we haven't had over fifty percent residents on a project like we've had at site tech, that's a successful project, um, so. Uh, however it's looked at or uh not being looked at in the aggregate, which it is in the aggregate, um, uh, people are being put to work. People know about it, uh, as Charlie said, whether it's municipal uh, uh, project or a private school project. Um, these are uh things that you guys should uh be proud of, because this is out in the community, it's growing. Um, and it's only getting better, um, and it's only getting more streamlined, so. Thank you guys for putting the uh ordinance together, um, and the committee together, um, because it's unit results.
Well, it's been a team effort, so thank you for your comments, Che, and to, uh, I applaud uh Springfield College and Thirty One Elm Street are not city projects, so. Uh, for this, are we, the effects of the REO to spill over into the private sector of construction is very encouraging. Um, and I'm sure I'm, I'll echo Fiore's uh in in the fact that we're, we still have much more work to do. And we need to, and the work that we do have to do has to be better, and um, I appreciate the opportunity to serve in this committee. Uh, I'm only as good as the people who invest their time with me, so if there, I thank you and I, if we're any, if we're gonna take any applause, we all should applaud. And we should all take a bow.
Yeah, uh, well, I'm just saying for you guys on the council, uh, it doesn't, and it's just my opinion. Um, it doesn't seem like you guys take as much uh credit or just due on the council for the projects that are successful, just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I can't speak for Tim, but I, the thing is, this uh, it's an honor to be a servant, um, I'm a politician, but I'm also first, I'm a servant to all the community. And to, whether you're cheerleader of mine or not, uh Fury, you want to close this out?
Yeah, no, I just want to ask that if we can see, uh, as I said, supporting documents as they come in. Second is, am I also correct that we have one window job closing out, and really the city only has. The, the project, uh, Fontaine project and the little bit left at the Forest Park, so we had three projects going on. Do we know of any other, was there any other projects that we did not know about, and are there, what is coming up for secured? What do we have for secured projects, so we can uh have a moderator, so we can start looking for uh? You know, updates as that project progresses, so we don't find out that it was going on, uh, and not realize it was going on. Those are the three projects. Today, just something to work on as we move forward.
Got, gotcha, so those were the three projects, uh, uh, REO projects, there are no more REO projects right now outside of. The project at Duggan Field that I just intimated a bit ago, um, that uh Gaglier Ducci is doing. One point four million hour contract for the uh, uh, field at uh Duggan High School. Um, the project will go for the better part of a month, it will start in mid February and end up in mid June.
Okay, Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, just uh wanted to acknowledge what Shay said, thank you for those kind words, but. I would agree with Melvin that they go to everybody, and while we haven't hit some percentages, we have hit some, and there's a great conversation. Uh, with everybody involved in it, this is a good meeting, there's about ten or twelve of us here, and Tracy, Tracy added to the meeting as well. So, um, so thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
And uh, I'm going to make a very, very serious effort to make sure that we meet in the month of March. Um, uh, the thing is, is this is, actually today is the thirty first, huh? Um, yes, it's a late February or early March, but the thing is, we need to get back on track getting to meet here monthly. Uh, if we're going to um be effective, uh, and then within the next, you know, so figuring in the next thirty days, we're either getting an ideal of. How Duggan is starting, or maybe there's something else coming down the pipeline that we can get uh an update on, and. Maybe we'll be closer to getting the final reports on um the final numbers for the both the window projects, the Forest Park, but. We need, uh, and I'm gonna make a concerted effort to make sure we're meeting more often, appreciate people would. Send to Sean, respond to him, his RSVPs, uh, requests for additions to the agenda. Um, just makes it easier for everybody if we get that stuff ahead, uh, ahead of time. And anybody who is expecting to get a document, doesn't receive a document, this should be a part of a CC, let us know ahead of time, so we'll try to do the best to get it to you. Um, that being said, thank you, everybody, for your time, appreciate you more than you know, stay healthy, crazy world, uh, keep your family safe. And um, God bless you all, thank.